There we go, guys. Called the meeting order at seven thirty. It's October seventeenth, regular city council meeting in City of West Liberty. We have tonight Mayor Pro Tem Karen McFerrin and city council members Dana Dominguez, Josh Schultz, and Omar Martina. We also have city manager Lee Gertz joining us by tune tonight. Uh, city clerk Sherry Hopeert and our chief of police Eric Worley also joining us by doing. All accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Movement seconded to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Uh, approval of the consent agenda. They're a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Movement seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? You can't read these minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carries four, I think it is four, zero. I heard, I heard three, Will's.
What?
Four, say aye. Sorry. Do you approve the consent agenda?
Sorry.
We'll move into reports. Council, any questions about any of these? Reports? I love seeing this picture of the, the hawk that Eddie uh. Uh, rescued, I guess he had an injured, injured leg, apparently.
Yep. Got it over to the Raptors there.
Do we know the status of the hawk? Because we're hoping it can come back to town.
I, I double checked with him, he hadn't heard anything.
Okay. Um.
He was a little doggy.
One of uh, the squirrel's natural predator, few natural predators. Must encourage the hawk. We must encourage the hawk population. Is it a hawk or a falcon? Do we know?
It was just a hawk, it was like a falcon.
Uh, maybe there are other ramifications to the hawk population, I'm not sure. Anyway, that's a good one. Uh, if there aren't any questions about the reports, uh, Leo isn't here, it looks like.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, oh, Mr. Mayor, I can give you a little bit what Leo would probably report on. Um, so we're, um, we're back up and going on Rainbow and Maxson, uh, Kyaowa. Uh, was to be here today. We've got, um, there were some issues, if you remember, where the stakes for the relocation of Poles was to go, they were covered. Um, so that put Kyaowa off, um, of the project for a little over a week. Uh, but that has been remedied and it was my understanding they were to be there today. Um, Naughty Circle Drive has, is going full. Board, um, they tore the entire street up. Um, we did have some communication pieces, um, we've made note of it, but been, we've been working with B and K. Um, and thank you to, uh, Brittany and Eddie and, um, staff and all of us working together to, uh, come up with, uh, ideas on how we can handle the garbage and recycling to make sure that was taken care of, getting the communication over to the neighborhood, uh, to let them know about that. So I just encourage, again, community members to reach out to city halls, to me, the city manager. If there's some issues or they need some assistance and please don't drive in your neighbor's yard or over the curb, um, to get to your home. So, um, with that, then also Leo, um, we worked with him on the powerhouse roof. We do have a bid in. Uh, so, um, hopefully we get something before council here, the first meeting in November. Gosh, it doesn't seem like that's real, right? We're already saying.
For real.
Yeah. And then, um, I do know Northway Well was back, uh, today also working on the project down at the powerhouse. And that's, that's all I got that I know I've been working with Leo on.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council at all? Okay, we'll move on. Bender voucher claims, we have.
I just want to share a committee meeting.
Oh, please, yes, sorry.
So I did this speak at the last meeting from our library board meeting, but, um, just to share with you guys that from that meeting, there has been a couple of hires. Um, there at the library, Ally seems to continually be working on review of all of the policies and making sure they're all kind of reworded correctly and updated, which is nice to see. Uh, the library also, the board approved a new logo design that you'll probably start seeing as well. Um, around, and I know our library director, Ally, has sat down with the city administration just to kind of go through the financial reports and kind of understand them more. And she'll of course take all of it, go back to the board, uh, kind of help things so they can understand them when they're viewing them. So as we all know, reading these reports can be a little confusing. I know, um, our city clerk Sherry has offered to, to end one of the meetings as well. There's some questions and somebody will post there, so.
Yeah, we've talked, I think it was November.
And I think we have more library meeting.
Yes. Are you enjoying that?
I do, actually. That's nice. So much more library, right?
Not.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I was there this morning, uh, reading to the first graders.
So fun.
That was fun. Yeah, it really was fun.
Do they ask you a million questions?
A million questions. Yes, they were.
Do you know someone's? Do you know my mom, Sherry?
Yes, it was really, it was really, you, I enjoyed it a lot. They're adorable. Um, now that you brought up the library, I, I, I did actually have a question about, it says today will be, continue our discussion regarding alcohol in the library. What is that about? Just here it is.
I didn't know how else to put it. Um, we were reviewing our meeting room policy last month. I included a statement saying that the, um, library board would need to approve any alcohol usage in the library, uh, libraries meeting room at their previous, like whatever meeting, regular meeting is scheduled before the event. Um, and a board member would like to discuss that line further, um, in regards to whether or not alcohol should be allowed in the library at all.
At all, right now with, with approval.
There is no, there was no policy on the books at all without the discretion of staff.
Okay.
And I would like the policy.
Yeah, makes sense. Good, thanks for sharing that. Any other committee meetings? Need to be talked about? Okay, we'll go on to vendor voucher claim. Uh, tonight we have just one list and the amount of eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty cents. Is there a motion to approve?
No, I shouldn't give her.
Second.
Movement seconded to approve. Any discussion or questions? It's a big one. Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries four to zero. Public comments and correspondence. Is there anyone here in the room with a public comment or correspondence? Okay. Uh. Councilman Schultz?
I had somebody reach out to me discussing, um, curiosity at the, kind of the end of East Eighth Street. Um, there'd been a lot of dirt moved in to that area. Um, I don't even know how to describe it as the old Harrell's auction law area. So they were just kind of checking in on that, uh, with concerns for, you know, the amount of rain that falls sometimes in that area, kind of collecting rainwater too. Um, I did reach out to our city manager and brought that to our attention and, um, I believe Terry Gertz is reaching out to the property owner.
Okay.
It was deep up. Um, and discussing permitting and.
Yeah.
Now, there's any update that you want to mention, Lee?
Um, I haven't got an email back from Terry yet. Um, as soon as I do, I will, I'll let council, um, all know. Um, but I can tell you, yeah, there, it's my understanding that, um, that dirt is excavating and, you know, bringing filter in. It's my understanding that there's supposed to be a permit and Mr. Gert told me that he had. Um, it's my understanding, the conversations come up before and there was a communication stating not to do that. And then I'm following up with Mr. Gert again because I understood that there was a permit needed and we needed to understand why the filter was going. Um, and I think as, uh, the other thing is, is just what you're alluding to also, Josh, is that, um, typically the DNR with waterways and, um, how water drains, um, it's important to know if that's impacting, that could cause flooding, if it goes down into the city sewer system, um, the stormwater drains and causing issues there. So, um, once I have that information with Terry, um, and have a bigger or a wider discussion on it, I will follow up with council and give you an email, an email and an outline on that, so. Okay.
Right?
Um, and I did have some, uh, communication brought to my attention just concerning the Naughty Circle project. Um, I was told that no one was notified about it, basically. Um, it's my understanding that, you know, Lee directed Eddie to make sure there's posts on, um, all the doors, um, which has been done, which is great. And I saw a bunch of that information. It was very thorough, I thought, it was easy to read, so. That's, that's good.
But should have been done sooner, is that what they're saying? Like they.
Possibly, uh, I'm not sure what the process is. Is that something that, uh, that we do or the contractor does normally?
So the contractor is responsible for notifying the homeowners. Um, that's a part of the agreed upon process. And this also happened previously on Rainbow and Maxson. Um, I know street superintendent Reinhardt had met, um, last Friday with, um, V and K. Uh, the, the manager on site and the contractors. And again, it was stated that, um, the homeowners, all the property owners would have been notified. And then Adam provided, um, an update to Brittany and myself with communications, just so we could at least get, um, proactive and, and, and get that because as of Friday, they had not been notified. And so I had, um, received correspondence over the weekend as well. Um, provided maps, followed up with emails. And so when we came in on Monday, it was clear that, um, the homeowners had not been notified, so we got to work right away to try to get as much information out there. So, um, Adam, I had email communications today because he's at a conference and so, um, and I did address this with, um, V and K. Um, the disappointment and the frustration of this yet again, so, um, when we have Leo in the house, we, I, I think we, we need to just make it clear, um, of what that process is going to be. If, if the contractor's not going to do it, then we need to know so the city can take steps to be proactive. Because again, like I said, this is the second time that this has occurred and it's the city's face on this, not the contractor, so. But again, I just encourage, I encourage the property owners to reach out. If, if they have more questions, have concerns, but to stay, um, we will keep the website and we will keep social media up to date with the information. It's my understanding they're going to be pouring concrete tomorrow. And, um, it looks like it should be, if everything goes okay, then it should be able to dry and set, um, so they'll be able to open the road back up on Monday. But again, that's all dependent on the weather, so, okay.
Appreciate you guys working online, getting that info out there. So, thank you.
It is also available on Spanish, in Spanish on the website. I know all of the postings were in English, but they did include a tag that Spanish was on the website as well.
Okay, very good, great.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Great, perfect.
Uh, I just had a couple of things. I had, uh, community members approached me. One was about a drain cap at Heath Manor property. I don't know i- if there's a drain cap that's supposed to be there, if there's a drain cap that's missing, but they were wondering, uh, if the city knew about the drain cap. So I would forward that on to you, city manager Gert.
That's my drain cap.
So, yeah, so we, we had discussed this briefly last meeting and I do owe, um, and I, I do owe administrator, uh, McFerrin an email back because he had sent me an email as well on that. And what it is, it was an update to, um, I, I think most of you are familiar with what we call a beehive. So it was an update to the drain system because of the new road construction and how water will drain. So the, the existing one was replaced with a larger one and, um, and it has a different look to it than what would have been there before. Um, and again, that has to do with the upgrade to the road and, um, just for a better drainage system off of that road.
I, I could be way off base here, but I got the, um, impression that the rounded cap that was previous was much more liked than the current one.
It looks a lot nicer, but kind of like Lee said, it doesn't, this, the slips through the dome.
Uh huh.
It's very thin.
Oh, maybe that's why they're concerned.
The area where I think the drain cap is that, um, we're talking about, it's at the corner of the entrance from here onto the street and that's right where they've redone like.
Okay.
The area, so it kind of all flows right, so.
Okay.
Doesn't look as nice, but. Yeah.
Yeah, because your, your, your road has a, a center pitch to it now versus where it was a, it was not a, you know, uh, it was not a paved road before. So it has different draining versus how it will, how it drained in the past. So.
Crown.
Yeah, well, it has to be able to run off that road and it'll run, again, Leo is going to be better at explaining this. But the bigger part of it is, is that the drain, um, it's going to allow for sediment, you know, or where before there wasn't the need for that because the road, it wouldn't run off the road, it just saturated into the road. So now it has to have somewhere to go.
All right, I'll let you talk to the administrator about that. And then the second thing was, I was approached and, um, somebody was wondering whether or not the yard, the, the signs in the yard, the yard sign placements could, the restrictions could be relaxed for the next three weeks due to the oncoming election. So I was going to pass that on to you.
So my understanding is code allows, so if, um, you want to place the sign in the, in the, in your yard, then you have the right to do it. It's not, you, you're not to place them in the right of way.
Away, correct. And I think they were asking whether or not that could be a possibility to wave for the next three weeks, so.
Hmm.
I'm just passing that on.
Is that, is that done sometimes, I wonder?
I, I don't think I've ever, in my experience, have ever had that come up.
I can see why you would want that.
No, because it's more visible. Yeah, because you ha- you, you can't put anything in the right of way. And some people's yards extend out and some have virtually no front yards, so, yeah. I don't know, that's the only thing that's, I think we've allowed close to that. Maybe it's not in the right of way, I don't know, but is the, um, Lions Club flags placement.
Hmm, that would be the right one.
And we, um, we actually had a resolution to allow that to, there was an action item on it, yes, yeah.
Well, that could be a, we can't take action on tonight because it isn't an action item on the agenda, but something to keep in mind for the next election, maybe to.
Yeah.
To bring that up, you know?
Bring up, yeah, because it's, it's kind of short on time.
I don't know that.
This, this year.
Yeah, we would have to do it at the next meeting, which is right, right before the election.
Uh, right, it would be, it would give them a week, I think, or two. Maybe a week.
It is the day of the election.
It is, right?
Uh, yeah, it is. Because the election this year is on this, uh, time.
There's the day of the election, yeah.
Yeah, so it wouldn't do any, it's no fun. It wouldn't do any good.
Maybe we can hold an, uh, election party two days after the first month.
Okay, something to bear in mind for next time.
For next year, yeah. But I just wanted to pass that on as something to keep in the back of our heads.
Great.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Councilmember Dominguez?
No.
Okay, councilmember Martina? City manager Gertz, public comments or correspondence?
Um, just, uh, same as council, just, uh, the correspondence on Naughty Circle. Um, and the drainage, uh, cap located at the, the one I know, I know the one I'm talking to, it, I believe it's in the front of the condos, the area there, if I understood right. Um, but I, I will follow up with Leo again and see if he can just make sure we have a clear understanding. Um, and then I think I had mentioned to you possibly, um, I had received a compliment from, uh, individual who's working on putting uh, a program together for Iowa Realtors and, um, shared, uh, compliments to the City of West Liberty's website and um, our community's, uh, social media and, and everything saying how well done it was. Um, so that was really nice to hear. Um, that's all I have.
Great, good to hear. City clerk Hopeert?
I do not have anything on this thing.
Um, I just have one that I want to, uh, follow up on. We've talked a few times about the stop sign that council wants to put up and some other signage. Is there, remind me, was there going to be a safety committee meeting about that?
No, there's a committee meeting as a whole.
As a whole, that's right. Already, right?
It's already scheduled.
Um. That's the next action item for that is to, is that committee meeting this plan? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, good. We'll move on to new business. Discussion and appropriate action by the city council on the economic development program application for slightly vintage. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
I guess this is supposed to be a, wait, I'm sorry, I'm not used to this new format.
Um, you can do it that way if you're planning on approving it.
Yeah.
Then you can talk to.
I.
If you have questions.
I think we, uh, this is a standard approval here, so we have a motion to approve this, um, this, uh, application. Is there a second? Okay, moved and seconded to approve this. I'm sure you have a chance to review this. Uh, eight thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars to slightly vintage for a roof repair. Anything you want to add to that, Ken?
Just bet it is much needed.
Can I say something here?
Yeah, please.
Um, since I'm related to Amber's husband, can I, um, abstain since we still have a forum, yeah?
Yep, I bet. That's, uh, appreciate you mentioning it. Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Abstentions?
Yep.
So the motion carries three to zero with councilmember Dominguez abstaining. We have a resolution for disposal of, disposal of city property to the Muscatine County Sheriff's Office. Uh, you see that letter from Chief Worley here? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Looks like, uh, Chief Worley. I don't know if you're on chief, if you want to, uh, mention anything about this, go ahead.
Sure, so when we hired Roosevelt Calderon, as you all might remember, we hired him directly from the Muscatine County Sheriff's Office. So they had already purchased a vest that was tailored to him. Uh, when we reached out about that vest, they needed some equipment that we had sitting in our garage, so we worked out, uh, a trade of sorts where we would give them some unused equipment that was just sitting in our garage and we would obtain a vest so he could immediately start wearing that for work.
Makes a lot of sense. And as you know, council, the reason this has to go through you is because it is city property. Uh, I know this has been an issue in the, in the past that even has shown up in audits, just to, anything that's owned by the taxpayers has to be approved by you before it's given away or traded, et cetera. That's what we're doing here. Um, any further discussion? And we have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote to councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. A resolution approving name, naming depositories for the City of West Liberty. You can see the list there. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Move and seconded to approve these, uh, this, this resolution. Any discussion?
Here is why, uh, the maximum balance in effecting of the resolution, why is West Liberty State Bank so much higher than the other institutions?
Clerk Hopeert, can you pack that one, or is that a city manager Gertz question?
I mean, I can tell you that that's where a majority of our items are. Um, I don't know if Lee has another reason for it. This is the resolution that is typically used every time that we're doing it. Those are just stating the banks that we can invest in.
And plus, I think it's been a longstanding process to do this, um, from, or very early on. Um, that was the primary bank here in town.
So West Liberty State Bank is kind of the operating bank that the city uses for everything and these other ones, I guess, would that, would that just be to allow the city to invest?
Yep.
And things that they offer.
Correct.
It wouldn't have to be these numbers. I mean, council could approve whatever numbers they wanted in there, right?
Yes, this is just the. That's, I didn't believe him talking, but she's muted.
Uh, it's an annual requirement, uh, by, by the state law that we have to, um, set those limits. And Sherry's correct, um, West Liberty State Bank holds our checking in our savings along with investments. Um, now that the interest rates have started to come back up, um, when we have certificates that mature, we will be sending them out for, um, a bid. And so then, as long as those financial institutions beat the state's um, financial bid, then we can invest. And so that's why we have to make sure we're setting those limits, um, so that we don't go over them. Also, there's been a question of if, um, the FDIC for insurance coverage and it's also a law that if your, if the bank ma- has your city funds, those are the, the entirety of those funds are paid out first. Um, and they're all, and they're covered. And again, that's, that's under law as well.
Good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Did that answer your question?
Oh, yeah, I was just curious. Eighteen stuck out to me.
Yeah, eighteen million. For those of you who don't have the paper in front of you, the maximum balance for West Liberty State Bank is eighteen million. And then there's a limit of four million for the other four banks that are listed, Community National Bank in Muscatine, Central State Bank in Muscatine, which actually should be renamed on this sheet. It's not called Central State Bank anymore. Central Bank of Iowa, I believe. Um, Midwest One Bank in Iowa City and Hills Bank and Trust are all listed at four million dollars. Any further questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. A roll call vote, councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Motion passed with four to zero. And, uh, might be a record, guys.
Yeah, there was a mention of a application.
Oh, what? Yes, I did. So our, you weren't here. Um, our codifier just reached out and let me know that he had updated all the ordinance that we have passed in doing our floodplain ordinance, which is huge. Um, it is out on our city website, so if you guys want to go out and take a look, you'll be able to see all the updates. Um, and then the codification process itself, we're hoping to have some form of draft in either December, January, and then the finalization should happen between March and April. It kind of depends on how long it takes and if there's any adjustments that we want to make, so.
That's an important point because the next council, um, will make it some important calls there probably on how the city code will, will unfold, and it is very needed. Uh, the current code definitely has some outdated language in it, like something I mentioned, uh, before the meeting, bicycles are supposed to be licensed. Uh, yeah. And every bicycle in the city, according, according to the current city code, just to show you that it gets outdated over time, according to this current city. According to this current city code, every bicycle in the city is supposed to have a license. Yeah, you have to go to city hall and get a license. Along with dogs and cats, yes, exactly. I was pulling, hello, uh, we are sixty seconds away from adjourning tonight, so.
You're kidding.
Is there anything you'd like to update us on here before we?
Yes, I would apologize for being late.
I was excited to say we were gonna be under thirty minutes, but now.
That would be the fastest I think we've ever had.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, like to hear your update, though.
Okay, lots of construction going on in your town and I'm sure I don't have to tell a lot of you, um. The city manager and others have, um, heard quite a bit of, um, stuff on naughty circle, for instance, some of the. Uh, coordination for the trashcans and that type of thing wasn't as smooth as we, we had hoped with All American. But I think they got over that hump today and then moving forward, I think, um. They're trying to pour concrete in the next couple of days on the first phase, so. The construction's progressing, maybe a little too fast, uh, we had told them to slow down, they did not wanna slow down and they. Wish to get it, get it going, so.
It seems like there was, uh, we had a discussion earlier, um. The homeowners weren't notified appropriately and it sounds like that's not the first time that that's happened, we, so.
We have told, we told them to notify them, they tried to tell us they did, then the city went out and notified them. But we, we wanted them to wait a couple of days and before we knew it, we had heard they were already excavating. So we probably need to have a talk with them on this next phase and the city will have to be involved because. Their local contractor, they're a very good contractor, don't get me wrong, but they tend to. Use some of their advantages of knowing people and things like that to move forward. And, and a lot of contractors want to move forward quickly, so they didn't do it out of being bad, they did it out of. Wanting to get this project done before winter and wanting to move.
Yeah.
We did try to get them slowed down, but that's very difficult as an engineer, we don't wanna say stop construction. Usually I don't tell them to stop unless the city says tell them to stop for one reason or another, you know. On this one, we did tell them.
It just seems like a timing thing, I mean, people need to be notified, obviously.
Well, I think they were notified, but it was like a couple of days ahead of time.
I, I don't know that we got that message.
What I had heard from All American is that they had somebody going door, door to door now. Whether he found all the people or not, and, and this is on the circle.
Do they have paperwork?
Just on the circle.
What?
Just on the circle. Just on the circle, what's that? Okay. Yeah, and then, I don't think the paper, I think that, that was discussed, and hey, you need to, if, if they're not there, there should at least be a, something left behind.
Yeah, we probably should.
I think that is done, but that wasn't done till yesterday.
I think we should require, if this is an issue, it sounds like it's been a couple of times, we should probably require a bilingual notification paper to be left.
That's probably a very good idea. We put it into their contract to do it, we should have probably followed up and made sure they did it a week at a time. Yeah, what happened is they gave us a, a phasing schedule we did not like at all. They wanted to do all naughty circle at one time and we're like, that's just not gonna work, there's no possible way, so then we made them. Come back to us with a second phase, I mean, now they did it in three phases. And we like that better, but it slowed them down as far as, cause it took two or three days for them to get that to us, for us to approve it. And then they didn't get their notifications out as fast as they wanted.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, we do need to, especially without American, because they, because they're in town, they wanna move fast and.
Yeah, which is good.
So that, that part of it, um. Okay, so that, we'll, we'll move off naughty, the problems of naughty circle and go to the problems at, um. Rainbow, a little bit different problems, but same problems, same kind of thing, so the, uh, the power. Relocation contractor who works through B H M G, basically working for the city, not really. Being, under V and K's contract, but still we're involved, we're out there. Um, they, they were having problems with where the pole should be, that. The H M G has it on their plans, they have a staker, B M H G hires a staker, the staker puts the stakes in, there were problems with maybe the stakes got. torn apart, restate, poles now, five or six of the poles are in right now. Keewa thought one of them was in the wrong spot, B H M G still thinks it's in the right spot, they had them getting elevations, it was back and forth quite a bit today. Or, or, or coordinates to make sure it's in there, what happened is, they think that. Somebody knocked over the stakes and then they had an offset stake, they think that got knocked off and then they put them back and they reversed them. The offset stake got put here and, but it sounds like they figured it out ahead of time, they got it in the right spot. That is a place too where the power line turns, so it's not gonna be a straight line. And that's what the key was, thought it was supposed to be a straight line, so those issues, I talked to B H M G tonight on the way here. One of my phone calls, why, and that's the exit, I only come here for the last twenty-three years, all the time that I ran past. This exit, and then the next thing I know, I'm like, that's West Branch, and I was on a, two, two telecons. Even though I haven't done my thing, I wasn't paying as much attention as I should have, uh, okay, so then. I think all that's straightened out, I think Keewa's gonna be there again tomorrow. It's moving, it's moving in the right direction, they're getting those power things, All American got all the dirt moved. They got, I think, I think John gave them rock to put against the curb, so I think between John. And Keewa and B H M G, everybody's moving it forward for, for tomorrow, so.
Good.
Even though it's a bumpy ride, we're getting there.
Yeah.
We are getting. The next one is the sidewalk, so we added the sidewalk along Columbus, we've had a problems with one or two of the business owners. We still haven't been able to get resolution on that, so I have to have a meeting with the city manager next week, that was another one of my phone calls that. It's definitely over my head of what we can do, we have approval to put the sidewalk in from the D O T and it's being put on D O T right.
Okay.
That's still me, there's still, that, that sounds good on paper.
Yeah.
Again, but the notifications this time, um, early on have told us we've got bigger problems than what we, we'd hoped.
Right.
Okay, well project, and I'll finish up quickly, the well project is finally moving forward and again, they had some parts. Problems with this, but y'all, the electrical's being done right as we, you know, last couple of days, the well driller is in there starting on the well. Um, of course, a lot of times in a powerhouse, they're not paying attention to safety the way that. Most powerhouse guys want them to pay attention to safety, so I sent them kind of a, a nice violation email today. And said, we do not want this to happen, we want you to start cordoning up the area where P P E equipment when you're in the thing, so we told them this at the pre-con, but. There's nothing really unusual, this is somewhat normal, but being in a powerhouse is not normal, so that's where we. You know, so you, you might hear a little, they've gotta, um, step up and, and they will. We, what we wanna do is get ahead of it, cause they're gonna start putting in a hatch up on a roof. Now you get into real safety problems and we wanna make sure that they, they get, that's all I have, sorry about being late.
No, thank you.
Sounds like you need a vacation.
You know, I, I tell people all the time that I love fall, it's my favorite time of year, but I don't like fall construction. Cause everybody's hustling in the wrong direction for me and I'm like, oh, so rain days right now, I take a deep breath, I kinda like it.
Thank you, glad, uh, glad to hear the update.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Okay, I think we really are literally at the end of our meeting, still a record, uh. Anything else to add, are we good, in, uh, council member Smith's absence, who wants to do the honors of, uh, motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.